It's gonna work well. We're gonna, it is 7:09. We're just one of the few minutes late. Trying to get everything up and running. So I'm gonna start with a roll call.
Lee.
Lee Feldman, Southern Planning and Development Commission.
Rodney King.
Juan McGinn.
Jane Lowery.
Al Green.
Richard Condon, I'm the chairman. And Susan Rock is joining us remotely. And let's see, that covers it. So we have a quorum. You have before you the agenda for this evening's meeting.
Make a motion, accept the agenda.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept the agenda for tonight's meeting. Any questions, any discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nope.
How about you, Susan? Are you in favor?
No, I'm in favor, yes.
Okay, it is unanimous, thank you very much. We have approval of the minutes of May 3rd, 2022.
So moved?
Motion was made by Susan, seconded by, was that Paul or Jamie?
Tom.
Tom, seconded by Tom. Any discussion?
Yeah, I thought there were more people in the public at the last meeting.
I think the issue is that not everyone signed in, so we didn't have record of that. Neither did I.
Elliot Perkins.
Yeah, right, but I'm just saying there were more people.
Oh, yeah, yep. What's your name?
Elliot Perkins, who's here.
And I am.
Earlier too.
There was one fewer board attendee than listed.
One fewer?
One fewer.
Was there any of us?
Is that you?
Jamie, Jamie wasn't here.
He was not here that night.
Oh, you? No, he wasn't, no.
Nope, he was causing trouble in another part of the state.
No, 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 not that night.
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous.
I will make sure that Anne takes those changes.
Yeah, I believe Phil was here, Rodney.
Yes, he was.
Yeah, Phil Lobbie was here too, so I mean, like I said, there were more people than, because he was representing the selectmen.
Good.
Do we have a representative of the selectmen at the meeting this evening?
No.
Oh. Okay.
This is the time for public comment. I'm assuming that you are here to address the issue and not a public comment. So since there's nobody from the public here, we'll skip right over that point. And we will go into new applications. Item number one, Vinegar Hill Music Theater, major conditional use application sketch plan. Proposal to use the outdoor area for an outdoor movable stage for concerts and driving movies, as well as an area reserved for food trucks. Speak into the mic, please, we have before us a representative.
Welcome. Is your mic on? There's a button there somewhere.
Yeah, it should be, I turned it on, I think, before the meeting. I think that one is, I think I have it. Yeah, I know, sorry about that. So our application is based on sort of informal, not approval, but last season because of COVID, we were unable to have as many people in the barn as we typically do. So as a measure to help continue, we purchased an outdoor stage and had a few outdoor shows until restrictions started to loosen and then we went kind of back to having more shows inside. And we were hoping now to get sort of formal approval to be able to use that area outside to have a couple of shows per season along with other small events. And on the issue of the food trucks as a part of it, in speaking with the code enforcement officer and town council and Mr. Feldman earlier today, just to confirm, we understand that those are separate applications and they have their own standard of review. So on our plan, we were just trying to show potentially where we'd be putting things if and when we did have them or use them. The other, a couple of the things that came up as we talked about this leading up to that, the capacity we have for our septic service now, is it 300 people? and we don't anticipate having any more than that at any outdoor event, it's based on the size of the parking lot. So that was why, but in the event we did for some reason, again, I understand we'd have to come back in and get additional permission for something larger and for the use of porta-potties, but we wanted to show again that we have the space for them. I admit, there might have been two more information than we needed for this plan, I just still hope it didn't confuse the issue, but we're really just here to get a formal approval to be able to use that outdoor stage.
How many days a week is it gonna be running?
Inside or outside?
Overall.
Typically, what we have booked for now, it's usually two to three days a week.
Because I know you've had events there also.
Yeah, sporadically.
You know, like weddings or whatever else that?
We've had a couple.
In the past, it has been?
Yes, this year, we've had a couple weddings over the past year, but they weren't really doing that at the space beforehand, but, so we have had a few weddings, a few charity events. We had a dance recital for a kid's dance studio, we've done that twice, we had a preschool graduation party, mainly sort of community type events that give people a spot to go to, those type of things. And with the outdoor stage element, it has allowed in some cases to have people who are in the more at-risk communities feel more comfortable coming to these things because they're outside, so it's been a benefit to them in that way too.
What are the hours? Do you have posted hours that these events have to take place within?
Yeah, when you purchase, for a concert, those are prescribed times and it has a prescribed curfew, it ends, I think 10 o'clock is the latest it can go. So on the tickets, when people purchase them, you know, we open at six, or I'll call it six or seven, and the show runs till nine, depending. It's not a, it's not like an open venue where people walk in and out all day, it's just, we're closed essentially, we have an office for the manager, where she can go, or we have another office down in Kenny Bunkport too, so it's not an active place, we're not having that.
I'm curious about when, if you have a show, will the audience will be, will be sitting or standing?
We have a space, we have a parking, often we have the show outside, we have spaces on the stage, so a lot of people, free chairs and they'll put their cards, put the film down, the outside, and people, we have staff, put their cards, tell them where to go. After that, they're, in these parks, a lot of the parks are
Would you be losing some of the parking spots?
I don't think we're maximizing the capacity.
Yeah.
I think it's hard to be happy to have the parking lots attached on, and it's not, but
Good.
Yeah, but, you know, the space, beyond our normal capacity.
Because I know there's supposed to be no off-street parking there, and in the past, not necessarily with you guys, but just in general, where they've had different events, there has been an overflow, I mean, of parking. I would just, I'm not saying you, I'm just saying in general. I live down that way, that's how I know. I pass it every day, twice a day, going home and back and forth, so I mean, I'm the only one who, except for Tom, we live down this southern side of the town.
So, but.
I would, in terms of parking, I would point you to 5.12 off-street parking and loading. Item number four, required off-street marking for all land uses shall be located on the same lot as the principal building or facility. If parking spaces cannot be provided on the same lot as the principal use, the planning board may permit the spaces to be located on other property within 500 feet of the main entrance to the principal use, and a pedestrian walkway provides direct off-street access to the principal use. Such parking areas shall be held under the same ownership or lease as the use served, and evidence of such control or lease shall be required. So if you, first off, I don't think you'll be allowed to use the vet because you don't own the property. And, which I think would create an issue.
Do you have a limit to the number of tickets that you sell for events?
Um, yes, yeah. I've enjoyed the past year, I think this is
This is just a few shows, you're back on in the building?
To the chair?
Yes, Susan.
So we, you know, the discussion we had with the auto museum on Portland Road is not dissimilar to the one we're probably gonna have here, and that is the number of showings, the times of the showings, the parking situation and whatever are still so vague that I don't know how we bless anything without more specificity.
Well, this, I have to say, this is an unusual application, we haven't seen anything like this. The only thing that, for the board's knowledge, the only thing I think might be close to this is what Bentley has done, they got special permits for, I don't know, ten, half dozen times for each summer.
No, it's my understanding they get one, and it covers the entire summer, the mass gathering permit that they have.
Yeah, that's how that's worked.
So it's, then it's, but it's still only so many that they're allowed to have, or something like, there are some conditions, maybe this could be something like that. We don't really have too many, let's see, it's
Events?
Well, it's hard to fit this in into the, into the ordinances, I'm not sure where it fits in for outdoor events.
I think that
I think that becomes an issue for the selectmen under the mass gathering ordinance. And they would, they would be the ones that would determine how many you could have. Our concern is more along the lines of what's it going to look like, what's the use going to be, and what sections of the ordinance do you have to follow in order to do that? Once that's all done, then you'd have to go to the selectmen and say, I need a mass gathering permit, because we're gonna have a band this weekend or that weekend. But we, I think we're more interested, or we, I think we should be more interested in the toilet, the septic system, the parking lot, where's the stage gonna be, where are the food trucks going to be located, that type of information. And let the selectmen handle the, the size of the crowd that they want to allow.
The next time, can we have a better picture of what's going on? Because this looks like it's just copied over and everything else, I mean, a better layout, that's what I'm saying is, because the fact is, I know you have, in the past you've had like one food truck, because they aren't that many allowed for one, per se, but second of all, is there reason to have additional for different variety of food? Because you have one, you put up a shop, I mean, you know.
Where are the food trucks going to be? Because I can't, I can't tell looking at the picture.
They would be, would say good.
That's where he usually parks. I mean, in the past, I mean, I mean, I mean, there's one spot he parks and he's out of the way and everything else, so everybody can waddle down to him and come back.
Okay. Yeah, I see, I see what you're saying. There is a spot that says food traffic, no, it's foot traffic.
Foot traffic.
Foot traffic only, and then he's got the two R, the two red colored in that says food trucks, if you look at the legend on there, tell us. Right?
With their
Solid red square. Right? It's a solid red square, yes.
Right, you got two food trucks there, and then you've got his concession stand.
Okay.
You gotta look at the legend up there, and it tells you what those colored in squares are.
Right.
I do have one question on your drawing, it does say on here, there's a, basically a black square, doesn't show a color in or anything, but it says 2024 additional parking plan. Okay. All right. So I was trying to figure out if it was this weird old area or there.
So could you clarify that the food trucks, it's a separate whole issue than the stage issue? The food trucks didn't fall when the stage is being used? I am.
The chairman's point that we want to know what our plan needs for how this is going to go. Okay. We're getting the most organized in the event that we've ever, that we've been, not gonna be, those aren't gonna be fixed. We never have. Like, there's anything, facilities and operations, other people are for the show, very simple.
Would, would the indoor bathrooms be used during the outdoors?
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, I know it seems, I get it, it seems big, but really, you know, never had, there hasn't been a lot of people, never had, at least one that that's, like, that's in line with us, so it's not that much people, they're not all in one place. One place it costs me.
Yeah.
It's not like the garden, you know, the first area, the garden, that goes down, you know, you know.
Great.
So basically, you're just looking to do what you do inside, taking it outside, and you provided the engineered drawing for the stage. Right?
Now, on your plan, the parking area adjacent to the stage is noted as foot traffic only? So you'd still, you'd still have some parking in that area, as well as back into the larger parking, okay?
Just one further. Yeah.
Yep. Just curious, how many parking spots are there in the back area? So you had shows the last two years outside, just last year, so you had that, the despot weird.
She was very aware of the current ones and the If we also have some education, we want to do anything, food, some pre-planned, other sort of sales behind the stage, the surface, but also that stage, we're
Are you aware of any issues or complaints that arose?
From the party?
No.
No?
Well, I'm glad to hear that. Hopefully it wasn't just a goodwill of getting through the pandemic.
No, I mean, I don't want to compare the thousands here, to the shows we had, that was that, the ones where it was, you know, the type of music, that was the sound of the whole lot of that. I'm not having that
So I'm looking at it, I think there are a number of issues that need to be addressed. And no disrespect to whoever the artist was that drew this, but I think we need an engineered plan that's going to show us all of this information, the same kind of information we would expect from any other applicant who would be coming in to do some work. I'd like, I see the information on the stage, which is great. Is the stage going to be located in one spot, or is it going to be movable?
It's by the design, but it will
Okay.
So then, of course, it's, we don't have to get the platforming and something done, but the, this is the layout, the structure, not many, there are, just the stage, it would be expected, we have, talking, we're in right now, it's short, and I think
We have that issue, we have, we have the question of the septic system and whether or not the septic system is adequate. I don't think the codes enforcement would agree with you that it is.
I think, well, they sign off, I mean, again, it's the same, same line of people that they have inside, same passing, same passing strict, so we're not adding people to the system. Again, it's more like a, if you're something inside, same system, certain inside, certain outside, and also some operation people to actually
I think we would, we would need something that indicates that it's capable of handling that capacity, I don't know what it is that, that we could get, I don't know if there's, like
So why, why are we, or the town, under the impression that it is not to capacity, or not, not functioning as it should?
Because the original, the system was originally designed for 1.5 gallons per person, the state code now says five gallons per person.
But it vanished to
And if you're going, if you're going to, to expand out, then that expansion would require you to meet current code standards.
But is this, is this an expansion though?
Yes. This is not something that they currently are permitted to do.
It's, to me, it seems like it's the same, outside of the food trucks, but it's the same thing, except it just happened, the stage happened to be in a different location. Same, same number of attendees, the tickets sold, I think it would be, if, if the, if we've been having problems with the septic, I think we'd have to look at that, but if they're not expanding the number of, of participants or users?
Yeah, it'd be one thing if you were gonna have the same number of people inside while you had another event going outside.
Right, that's
Now you got a problem, right? You just double your size. But if you're running the same size, whether it's inside or outside, I'm not sure.
One or the other.
Well, and there's always porta-potties, they can always augment what's there with porta-potties.
I can hear you.
So you could always augment what's there with the porta-johns?
And so, no, we're getting into, we're getting into some fairly deep issues, in the sense that in, with the porta-potties, they're not allowed. The state law allows porta-potties if you're having a one-time knockoff type of event, but as a permanent use, if you will, for the summer months, for the, for the whole summer month, they are not allowed under state plumbing code as a replacement for toilet. So the only facilities that they actually have are those that are in the building, relevant to the septic system. The issue has been that when this was originally approved, the Albert Frick, who was the soil scientist that got the approvals at the time, had designed it for three gallon, had initially designed it for three gallons per person, and then And then went to the state with a um. Uh, alternate design that was experimental. And the state waived that requirement down to 1.5 gallons per person. But if you look at the state plumbing code today, this use requires five gallons per person. And this board, not you, but this board at the time, back in nineteen ninety seven. Conditioned the owner of the facility at that time to provide water meter readings every week. For, I believe it was like three years. Um, to be provided to the town to be able to monitor uh flowage. And that was never done. Um, that's not Peter's problem per se, but we don't know um how the system is operating. And whether you're right, whether we're indoors or outdoors, the capacity is going to be limited, it has to be limited. But the question becomes back in nineteen ninety ninety seven. How many events were being held versus how many events are being held today? You know, are there mul- we we talked with Peter at length today, had a meeting with him. Now, the issue becomes are there opportunities for multiple events in a day? Um, we're hoping there aren't because that is a massive load on that system that it wasn't designed for. Um, so there there are issues and what we've asked is that. Um, we get either someone from Frick's office because Albert has since retired. But um Brady Frick, his son now runs that operation or find another soil scientist that can um. Tell us whether or not the soils that are there and the system is operating fine now. We're also adding um. And it's allowed by by permitted use and it's not an expansion of anything that requires you folks, in fact, they've already done it. But they're also using it as a wedding venue. Which is an added use number of people based on wedding venues. Um, or banquet halls, if you will, under the state plumbing code. Um, I think because you also have to understand. When Jim Nagel looked at this, there's also a four bedroom home. That is factored into this because there's an apartment within Vinegar Hills building. And when that's factored in, I think the the limit load is seventy six people. So there's a number of factors here um. For consideration that need to be looked at.
Question.
Yeah, Marty.
You may not know, but the fact is when. They reduced it, is that when the new low flush type toilets were coming in? So there wasn't as much water consumption as it normally would be, I mean.
There's nothing.
Well, you know what?
Yeah, I I understand that, but there's nothing in the state's permit or in any information we have in house. That would suggest that's why that was being allowed.
I'm just I'm just thinking is that everybody's so conservative, I'm trying to be water today. You know, big flush, a little flush, as long as it goes where it has to go, that's the biggest thing.
Thanks. The only thing, the only thing the state said was that it was an experimental system and the lady at the state at that time. Um, signed off on dropping it to 1.5 gallons.
Well, evidently the experiment, it it seemed it worked. It's been what twenty years?
Twenty five, yeah.
Twenty five years and I don't know if 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 um been any problems with it.
But it's. I would I would say we don't know if the system worked, they never provided us with the detail. So we don't know if it worked.
My assertion on that would be that even if they did.
Yeah.
Give the information on the water usage, it it may not. Give any indication of whether the system was functioning properly to remove the the nutrients. From the the system, I mean, you know, not 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 having any issues with the plumbing part of the system.
Right.
Um, but yeah, for the function of the the septic, that's a whole different difference. Right.
So the the other aspect of that, and Marty actually mentioned it to me as well. Um, is that the septic system designer, we don't have any of that information in house. But we know that it was done based on some of the information. Is that Al Frick had actually designed the system to double in size than what's there. And only half of that system was put in.
It's interesting.
Oh, another thought you might be able to help yourself with. In the past, not presently, but how who has serviced the systems? For, you know, uh disposal, I mean.
Pumping.
Pumping, okay. Yeah, but what I'm just saying is if you can find out. Who might have done it before, you might have been able to see how often they had to do it. Or anything else on a time period to kind of. Verify that the system was working and how it's been working, I mean, it's.
But Marty, I'm sorry, but that's really kind of anecdotal of what we really need to know and is um. To Rich's point, uh is what's there going to support? The kind of activity and human use. Um, and does it conform with current standards and does it have to conform? With current standards, given everything else that's going on on the property, I mean. I I just think we, they need to come to us and. Show us why the infrastructure of Vinegar Hill can support. Uh, their plan to do these kinds of events uh inside as well as outside. And. I mean. So.
I I just want to stress again, we're not increasing. Pass. We're not, we're not, we're not. It won't be done for our events. Um, I mean. It's a bit more. More people using this. We're not. It won't be done for our events. Um, I mean. It's a bit more. More people. Space. You don't have a stack. Um. So again, if you want to see behind this, then. It may be technically any second. Now outside. But our best system. It won't be any more stressful. Um, but we can serve them as additional to be careful. I know the problem. I think. I'm. Much clearer. For present. We're not. Have now. Okay.
Okay, the the outside use leads me to the to the one other concern that I have. The board can remember when we had an issue with an applicant over noise. And the great debate between. Was he making too much noise or was he not making enough? And we kept trying to get the the noise tested at the line, at the property line. And one person said that they met they met it. The the people that were against it said they did not, none of them. Had any experts that could tell us one way or the other, was it really met? I'd like to see something that says it's met at the property line. You you have you have a sound guy that can that's an expert that can testify. When you're at the property line, it's no greater than sixty five dB. If it's greater than sixty five dB, it's a violation of the ordinance.
Rich, I I can. I have passed there. At night when they've had the soundstage going outside. And I would say it was very well within reason. It wasn't a blaring yahoo dancing situation.
That Marty, that may very well be, but we've asked somebody in the past to provide it. And I think it's a, I think it's incumbent upon the board to to verify. That it actually does meet the requirement of the ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying, I mean, uh. Because actually your closest resident. Living on the sound stage side would be. Several thousand feet away, no, I'm just I'm just giving you very marks, okay?
M Marty, I understand that, but it doesn't.
It doesn't meet what you're asking for.
Right, it's at the property line, what's that reading say? Because that's what the ordinance addresses.
Well. So would that be? I guess. It's a place of software at the property. Which actually happens toward one. And. Like there's a lot of things from. If. Was it a man?
I'd probably recommend have somebody with an app that that would be playing the more. Music I'd rather listen to uh and and see what it comes up to. I'm I'm not into mellow music, I like screaming guitars personally.
Well, I have a.
Surprisingly, Rich, isn't your demographic.
I am I am not your demographic.
I mean, I guess. And if I. We're always the same. Well, it comes after. Then before you show, then the sound check. Which is all test. And we don't know what.
We 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 just need something that documents that.
Rich.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think. Uh. Already had to kind of been uh compliant with that. Already.
They're inside, so they'd automatically.
No, outside. When they're outside.
They weren't, we don't know if they were compliant with that, they didn't come to us.
That, yeah. Okay, I see. Well, we didn't we didn't get complaints that they that they were violating.
I I just. I'm wondering, I want to be speaking against compliance conditions.
Right.
Would that be something where you want the documentation of each outdoor event?
To the chair?
Yes, Susan.
So I live on the Senate Road over the bridge. Um, from Vinegar Hill and I can hear from my back deck. Um, all of the activities that are taking place outside. Um, I'm not saying I object to them, but I can clearly hear them. Um, but actually, my comment is more about um. You know, these are people who are trying to keep their heads above water. They have a lot of questions from the planning board. It sounds like they want some kind of a immediate relief so that they can plan their summer events. Um, I personally wouldn't be adverse to giving them a temporary uh permission. To plan their schedule with the understanding that they had to by the end of the summer or. By a certain time in August first, let's say. Uh, to get us the information uh that we asked for. I mean, I hate to hold up their entire summer. Asking them to gather all of this. Um, and that's only because I'm sympathetic to the fact that. Public venues like this have had a terrible time over the last couple of years. I agree that we need to know much more about how this venue is going to be used. But at the same time, I think. From a sympathetic business perspective, I think we should. See if we can't I give them some kind of permission so that they can craft a schedule.
I I like that, that soon, I think it. It's important to to not squelch, I mean, you're one of the uh keystone to our community, really. For the product of London. Um, I think having a temporary or one year. Uh, trial, I think is reasonable. I I would go along with that. But you still have to have some conditions, even that, but. Uh, I'm I'm afraid if you put too many roadblocks, we'll we'll have an empty building.
So if I may, um, because we have been working. Quite a bit with this applicant behind the scenes on a number of issues. Uh, which has been going on since late last fall or so. We're finally here at the point where um they're making application to get their approvals. You know, as we indicated to them today, the same thing as staff. Um, we're willing, we're willing to continue to work, we know that they're not going to have their approvals tomorrow and they've got some events coming up. That we're not shutting them down. But we also need to make sure that they continue to get through this process as diligently as possible with you folks. To get your get their approvals. And yes, there would be conditions on some of this stuff, reporting and other things. Um, like we're talking, like you're talking about. Uh, the biggest, the biggest concern though is that. Um. Giving them an approval on a trial basis or a one year basis. Once you give them an approval, it's an approval. And the next step is if there's noncompliance, then it's legal action. So I think what we need to do is make sure that wherever wherever we go and whatever we formulate for conditions. Are things that you folks are comfortable with and they understand they need to live with. Because if we give them or attempt to give something temporary or one year type of trial. If we ever did go to court, hopefully we never have to. The the courts are going to say, well, you gave them an approval, an approval is an approval, period. So we want to be careful about that, but we're also continuing to work with with um those folks. We had fairly lengthy meeting with Peter today to discuss all of these issues. It's a matter of making sure that. After he leaves here tonight. They don't go, oh, we're all set, you know, we're we're not going to have to do anything. I think we need to make sure that he does get an engineer. Um, to get a much better plan put together and get back before this board. Um, as soon as possible, not wait until August or September when the season's over. And um having gone a whole year without any approvals.
So can we give him a conditional use permit based upon their satisfying? Uh, the key uh issues that we've designated this evening? And give them a drop dead date that they have to provide the information that the board requested? And if they don't, then they don't continue to operate uh with these events.
I would say that answer is no, because conditional use permits are prescribed throughout the ordinance in terms of what conditions. Are listed that have to be met, so we couldn't, I don't think we could give a conditional use permit.
Right, um, so this is only sketch level, there's still questions that you folks have that he needs to provide supporting documentation to. And there needs to be a public hearing held.
Yeah.
Um.
And a site walk.
And a site and a site walk, if you choose to want to go down and look at the site and really understand it better, yes.
Yeah, I know. I if if you can meet the conditions in the ordinance and what the ordinance says, I think this is a great idea. I don't have a problem with it, I'm concerned about the fact that we follow the ordinance. That's what we have to do. And if we can. If you know anything about the history of this board. I think we've only rejected two permits in the fifteen years that I've been on the board. Uh, we don't normally tell people, no, we just say you you need to do this and this and this and this. And and it will work out and we'll be more than happy to work with you. To to find a way to get. Tom out there is a great one, he he loves to find ways to help people fix. You've got a problem, you can figure out what it is and. We all see different things in the ordinance that we go, oh, yeah.
So what what standards of the ordinance do they need to comply with? Site plan performance standards if there's not a conditional use?
Well, all conditional uses need site plan approval.
Well, I am correct. But is there? Is there a conditional use that they would fall under?
is there a conditional use that they would fall under with this that that they would have to meet the the specific performance standards of?
That's an interesting question, Jimmy. I mean, I think that if you look at my memo, what's kicking them in to the conditional use is an expansion of non-residential structure buildings in excess of 1,000 square feet. And the new non-residential use is involving more than 1,000 square feet of area where no buildings or structures are proposed. So we're now talking about, if you will, part of that.
More than 1,000 square feet.
Well, and you have outdoor gas gathering. You know, do they, you know, how much space are they going to have for seating capacity outdoors? Or, you know, when I say seating capacity, standing capacity to the public, how many people are going to be there? 1,000 square feet is not a large area, as we know.
How big is the?
Can you speak into the microphone a little? It's hard for me to hear. I don't know about you guys.
I think we don't have to have a fully survey site plan. It's an existing existing property with parking, not changing the parking or anything, building, no new building. But this, this is really almost unreadable. It would be good to designate where the attendees would be actually sitting or where, you know, it says put traffic home. What's that mean? Is part of that going to be used for seating or or not? So there'd be no, no parking, no tires involved. I think a lot of it is, if you exceed it, it could be. But I think one of the things that seemed like the trickiest thing to get through is is the 1,000 square foot expansion. That's about size as well.
A hundred by hundred is a thousand.
Hundred by.
Hundred by 10 is a thousand. Hundred by 10 is a thousand.
Thirty-five by 30, yes.
Hundred by hundred is a thousand. Thirty's a thousand fifty.
So would would they be required to designate where that new use area would be?
Yes, yes. And even though, you know, I mean, there's another issue. Talking about the food courts, so, you know, there's a couple of ways to deal with this, because if they're going to have four or more food trucks, they need approval from you. If they're going to have three or less during any events as a food court, they don't need to come to you. They would go through staff review. I would prefer, at this point, where they're coming before you for other stuff, that that food court area be designated, whether they have four there or not. And then we can, if they're, they have told us, you know, I don't know that I'm speaking out of term, but we were told, you know, no more than three, then, you know, this board could condition him on having no more than three on-site at any one time.
Make it easier all around.
Correct. Well, I would, I would think that the food trucks would be part of that 1,000
Absolutely.
foot space anyway.
Correct.
So, I mean, yeah, there's no question. It's going to be over 1,000 feet worth of space.
Rich?
Yeah.
I don't know about that, because when other events have been there, when they put up the big tents and everything else for weddings, there was never a measurement for the square footage or anything else. When they've had the outside, when they put all the new white stones down to make it look real pretty for a wedding, I mean, you know, like you're walking on ice or whatever, you want snow, I mean, but no, I'm just saying. I mean, I would think the else, I wouldn't include the trucks as a square footage.
Correct.
I mean, that's just my opinion.
Right. I know, no, I understand. And I would, because it's part of a commercial operation.
So so for a scale, if, I mean, they have, well, they're, they're planning a 16 by 20 stage. 320 square feet.
And if they have.
Three of them, three stages would be less than 1,000 square.
Would be nine, it would be 960 square feet total.
You figure, you figure a food truck, I mean, they're probably longer than than 20 feet, but they're much, much narrower than 16 feet.
Yeah, yeah, you're right, because I'm thinking of.
Eight by eight, right, by 25 or something.
Yeah, yeah.
Along with that 30, maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, you're right, you're correct.
I mean, so you would have to have one considerable number of trucks there to exceed the 1,000 square feet. Even with one stage.
As it's, in itself, yes.
Yeah.
But with multiple outdoor operations going on, you're going to exceed the 1,000 square feet.
So if you go over that threshold, which is, what, with the downside? What does that check?
They come, they come to us instead of site plan.
So would you need the whole new site plan? We need ours.
We need our site.
But what, what would we have to look at? New septic or new drainage or or do we just?
Again, we, from a septic point of view, show us that the septic will handle what's there. You know, whether, whether whether Jim Nagel says you have to have five gallons, we're going to, what we need is something that says that the septic system that is there or that is planned will meet the the standards that we have to have. That we, as a board, are saying this is the standard. If it meets that standard, if they, now, we're being told by Peter that the crowd capacity is not going to change. Then give me something that says that the septic system as is meets the standard for what it's supposed to be.
So, yes, I mean, a couple of things run through my mind with all of that is that, understand that when someone comes before this board with an application, it opens the whole site up for review. You know, you, we're not, you don't just necessarily looking at that narrow one issue. It's okay, what, you know, what are the impacts and what's going on here? We know in the septic system issue that what got approved back then does not meet the standards of today. Regardless of whether it seems to be operating fine or not. It was approved at 1.5 gallons and the standard under the state plumbing code today is five gallons per person.
So if he decides not to put an outside stage, he's fine?
Yep. If he decided not to do anything outside, he just packs up his bags and goes back and does his business.
I gotta tell you, that doesn't make a lot of sense.
I know. I know.
I don't know.
So Lee J, how do we, how do we get what we need and allow them to at least have a summer to stay afloat?
Well, and again, we're, we're not in the business of shutting people down. We want to see them continue to operate too, and and that has been communicated.
So what do we need from them so that they can do that?
We need a plan, a site plan or and the information that has been discussed here tonight, for example, that you folks can review and approve during a public hearing process.
With a signature block.
Sure.
So guys, do you know what you need to come back with so that you can get this speedily blessed so you can have a summer?
It's not profitable.
Well, we're also not, you've got to factor in where the public is going to be.
Yeah, right.
Outside. That's correct. I mean, let's not overlook that now, you know, it's not just the little stage, not just a couple of food trucks. There's 300 people out there.
And and to me, that's the issue that that we really should be looking at. It is and it's, it's not an increase in the, in the number of people, but it's an increase in the usage. And the usage section is well over 1,000 feet. Yes, we're going to have the stage. Yes, we're going to have food trucks. But remember, they're going to be sitting out in the parking lot in chairs, listening to the music. They don't do that right now.
Correct.
Or they're not supposed to do that right now. They, you know, they go inside and they listen, and it's originally it was set up that you'd be going into the building, you'd be watching a concert or or a play or some other aspect of what's going on. That's now coming outside.
Okay, but if I'm if I'm the septic system and I know I've got that many people, I don't think they care that I'm inside or outside.
They may, they may not. And I, but we're talking about the fact that there's a 1,000 square feet of area that has changed the nature of its use. It's gone from being a parking lot to being something else.
My, my guess is it's going to be well over that. It could be two or three thousand.
Doing that, yeah.
But it seems like it, it may have been the the extra capacity that that you said that Alfred said that it could be an expansion. But that, that's, that costs much, you know, that's not something you can do this summer. So down the road, it might not work, but for for a short term, I don't know.
So why could we make one of the conditions of use that you can only have the the events either inside or outside, but you can't have one and both at the same time?
I don't think he does.
I know, I know he does.
No, no, I just agree with you.
Saying if you're talking about use of septic.
I think that, I don't know if we're allowed to do that, but that would solve that you'd be not counting the entire house in the area around it that's being counted.
I mean, you're either using one or the other.
Yeah.
You know what? Let's face it.
He's looking at doing two at a time. You're having a wedding outside and you're gonna
absolutely, now you're going to overload the system and it makes sense. You've got to do something. But if you're just moving everybody from inside the house to outside the house, I'm just having a tough time putting my hands around why that would require a new septic system.
I agree.
So far, don't get me wrong, so far, no one has said he needs a new septic system. We need information. And 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 we can request it because this is a performance-based code. It's not even a code that this board deals with. We're trying to work with this client who spoke with us earlier today with a little bit of a different story, I think. That was a matter of just getting us the information from a soil scientist that says that that system that's there is still capable of working.
Right. And that's what I'm saying about that. I would if 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 all you're going to do is take the people out of the building and put them out in the parking lot.
and put them out in the parking lot. We, we have an issue with the parking lot with the thousand square feet of, of space that has changed its usage format. So that would bring us before, him before us. But when it comes to the system, if you're still, it's 300 people, whether we're inside the building or we're in the parking lot, then the system should handle that. And we should have something that tells, tells us that it will handle that and you don't have to go up to what the state code currently says.
So would be, there would be like the.
He, he get a letter from Al Frick? Well, in this case, it's not Al anymore, but it's.
From his old firm.
From his own firm, yeah, that says this system will handle it.
So I can do that, and I think that sound different. Just that, while I was here, it asked to have, I got on the tasking with that one and a half. I wouldn't be able to test it. I can go and have tested and believe it, that's not all. That it handled what we need.
So I think that's what we all think would make sense. But we have the issue with, with the, the use of the land. So I think, I don't know if we'd be allowed to have a condition. Probably the first condition, can only have one show a day, either here or there.
Yeah, because. Yeah, we can make a condition.
Adrian used to have two shows a day at least. I mean, uh, because she had one in the afternoon and one in the evening.
When they had a performance.
Yeah.
Right.
So I mean, uh.
You just couldn't have them both at the same time.
Using the same septic system.
Yeah.
One event, not, not so much the thing.
So ultimately, to me, the, the major issues that surround the change in the use of the site to include outdoor performance. Or, or number one, the noise, the potential for noise generation. And not necessarily in order of importance. Number two would be the potential interaction of, of pedestrians and people walking in a, a parking area. Then I'm not, not very clear on whether cars would be allowed in it or not uh, in that section of the parking lot. And then how traffic would interact in and around and flow through the site? Which roads would they, would it, would all the traffic have to come off of River Road? Would some be able to, uh, come off a wall post? You know, what are some of those functional, practical type of operational restrictions or, or parameters that you guys would have when you had an outdoor event?
And Jamie, the maximum number of attendees would the fire chief have to sign off on how many people they could potentially have in that space? They're saying 300, but max, but they're not, uh, you know, definitively saying 300 or less. Um, so do we, should we have a limit on the number of people?
Well, this is where I think, I think a, a, a little more of a bona fide plan is warranted because it would, it would, it would depict and count the number of spaces in total that are out there that would be able to be used, say, for an inside event. And then how many would be taken away by the public seating area in an outside event?
Right, and we need to have that.
And how many, if you, if you reduce the overall number of spaces by that much, does the overall number of participants or, or, you know, tickets that you could sell, would that have to be reduced accordingly because of the, you know, the, the number of patrons per number of parking space ratio that's allowed? Or, you know, or would you be able to accommodate the, that parking in another part of your site? You know, that type of thing.
Right, so those are things we need to know.
But, but also where they have the additional back, back parking area where they added it onto. A lot of times that was what they call staff parking. I mean, so that, uh, it is already there, so the overall number of spaces that they have subtracted from the staff parking would limit the overall, because that was one of the first outdoor lots that we had that had an outdoor lighting in the, in the parking lot. So I mean, that's another positive thing it has for safety.
So there's 60 parking spaces in the larger lot out back. Is what the plan that was done back in '03. That's the latest plan we have.
Yeah, because I, I think that's when she, they put the lighting up outside.
That, that.
That sounds about right.
Amount of 300, uh, attendees.
Hundred and eighty. I just did the calculations based on three per car.
So I might also just say that we've been discussing this for over an hour. And I think the time is near that we should tell them what they have to produce and so that, um, they know exactly what they need. It sounds like they have a pretty good idea, Lee J, based upon your meetings with them and the information from this evening. And, um, let them come back to us.
Yeah.
She said, she said that essentially it's, it's that time. We need to make sure that the applicant understands what it is that, that we want from him and then send him on his merry way so that he can come back at another date.
So ultimately, from my perspective, I'll, two big things that, that I would request, and I don't know if the board concurs, it's me, would be some form of a, of a sound narrative. Some, some assessment, let's put it that way, that, that you would have, that somebody would say, assuming, you know, a band is playing at whatever many decibels on the stage, we project that to be however many decibels at the propping line. And that's what they're going to do. And, and, you know, we would then ultimately have to set an operational limit on you guys to make sure that that decibel level is maintained at, at the property. Uh, and then, like I just said, the, the site plan that would, would depict parking, depict, uh, where areas are that would be off limits to parking and vehicles during an outdoor event and how, how you would operate the site, uh, supporting.
And the, the only thing I would add is, is something that says the septic system will handle it.
Let me ask a question to Richard, Lee J. Notwithstanding, I mean, I know there are nuances in every code. If a, a applicant were to come forward and have an existing building that is used as a restaurant right now, and they were to want to change that to a retail space, and this building, say, was, was built in 1950, would they be required to comply with the new building code?
If they, if they were. If they were making internal changes to the structure, yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So.
Not just building code, like, like fire code as well.
If these guys are not proposing to increase the usage to the septic system, why would the septic logic not apply?
Twofold. One is they're adding wedding, weddings to their usage, which was not originally approved back in 1997. It was approved as a theater. And that's all the, the previous owners, as I understand it, used it for. And two, it is a change of use. Well, it's not a change of use, I shouldn't say that. Um, it's no different than, well, let me back up. The septic system at that time that was approved was approved undersized. That's related to the building code. A building was approved that didn't have sprinkler systems. Someone is now wanting to, you know, they've still been in there, but they're wanting to kind of change the use or add to the uses that are allowed. And, you know, the building, someone is going to look at the building code and want them to do a code assessment as to whether or not they need to sprinkle the building. That's what has been asked here. Do an assessment of the septic system design because it was originally approved at 1.5 gallons and the state plumbing code today says you need five gallons per. That's a big difference. Um, you know, we don't have sewer and water in this community. And as you know, um, hydrogeologic analysis and new developments has been a very important thing. And we have a, technically, a really undersized system out there.
Um, I know this is not the only consideration. Are, are you guys on public or private water? But you also have a well. Do you know, is there other? So I, I guess what I don't know is, is where, does, does any public water service go down or close to?
I am.
No, no, there is no.
No.
No, because they come off River Road. It comes off River Road because that's where the main was.
Hi, um, this is Sarah Dearing. I know I've been muted for the entire section of everything. Uh, we do have public water use that is only seasonal, that actually gets connected May 15 through October 15, that we have public water use that we pay through, uh, the Kennybunk Water District. And they are actually setting it up tomorrow and putting our meter on, which they do on an annual basis. The well is only for off-season use.
Lower demand type of, I got you. Thank you. I mean, ultimately, my question was if, I mean, the, the, the crux of my question was if there were other off-site wells in the vicinity. And if you, you guys may know or, or not know that. You know, others?
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think.
Yeah, everybody would be, everybody would have it on. I mean, but the other factor is also don't forget with, with the water, or they're figuring it out, they're usually figuring out year-round usage. This is only seasonal usage. So the demand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, no, I'm, I'm thinking more from a, a potential groundwater, uh, drinking water.
So we're, we're looking at a better plan. Sound, sound, something that, that'll verify the sound, the sound plan uh, and verification of the septic system that, that it, it will do what it's supposed to do. Is there anything else?
On the better plan, that could mean a lot of things. Uh, I think you should designate, uh, an area where you expect the, uh, the public to be seated. And the one with, where the location of two or three, whatever number food trucks you want, or two, it would be easier for everybody. The problem with two, if you realize you want to have three, you don't come back. You've got to come to the board and get approval to reinforce that direction.
Yeah, if he has four.
Four he does, but three, no. You can, you know, you're coming here, it's not like you're staying below a threshold and not come before the planning boards. I mean, my take would be to get approval for as many as you think you can accommodate on the site. While you're coming in here.
Doesn't mean you have to have them.
You know, also, uh, we have the, you, you have the, uh, food truck, the one closest to the building, that's, that's my way. I think, um, if you want to have that, it should designate that, uh, that could be no difference. And, and another thing, I'm wondering, I was wondering during the show, would you be fencing off? How do you stop someone from just driving in? They see an open spot, pull right in?
No.
They didn't go to the site, it's really going to get to the park. There's another thing that's wrong. Shell, right? Yeah. It's not really connected. If there's no park, it would be barriers. So then someone coming in the main entrance, there. You have staff there when you're on all night. I'd like to see that defined in plan, you know, just to note that, that, or where, where did the, uh, physical barrier to prevent, just for safety purposes?
They have, uh, they also already do have, uh, fence posts up through there in between.
It's already there.
It's already there. I mean, uh.
So I would say that these are all things that you guys need to consider and come back to the board with a complete picture that answers some of these questions and with the site plan and all the other, you know, details that we've been discussing. And you'll have something actionable.
And they to really just get to a sidewalk?
I, no, I don't think so.
We'll think about it.
Our, our next.
Glad you want to board it, you'll see it. I'll see it, the rest of the, come on.
Our, our next meeting is in three weeks. I believe it's June.
Might be before then. I'll, I'll make a motion, we have it that night, 7th, the 7th. Um, at six o'clock.
Yeah. Motion has been made and seconded, they have a sidewalk. On, on June 7th, Tom made the motion, Paul seconded it. And we have a question.
We have talked to the board to be better.
You, you don't need their approval, I think you got that from us this afternoon, this morning. We, we said we're, we're not shutting you down, provided you continue to show progress with us.
We won't, we won't shut you down unless you decide you don't want to work with us anymore. Okay, back to the question again, we have a sidewalk on the 7th of June at 6:00 PM.
Yeah.
Any, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. And yeah, if you could mark out a little bit where you think the trucks are going to be and what the parking's going to look like, that would be great. Okay.
But if I remember correctly, when they turn out for parking, they always fill up certain sections first so that there are not blind spots. I mean, they're guided to like how you're going to the fair.
We just want to see where they're going to park, however you get them in there.
I'm just saying.
We, we shoehorn them in there and if they want to get out, they have to roll their windows down and climb out the door.
Oh, if it all works out.
We're trying.
Do we have anything from the plan, uh, from the town plan?
Uh, the only thing I could add, and I'm, I'm sure you're all anxious to hear about it, is that I have prepared a, um, presentation um, that another community has asked me to do, uh, for next Monday night uh, on the new housing bill, LD 2003. And so I can walk you through the law and how it might impact the community. Um, I'd be happy to do that, whether it's part of the next meeting or.
Is, is that meeting, uh, through Zoom or? Is, is that meeting uh, through Zoom or is that going to be a face-to-face meeting?
Which one? The one that I'm doing Monday night?
Yeah.
It's, it's a face-to-face meeting.
Okay.
Um, um, and I'd be happy to, to do it here. I don't think uh, the next agenda actually has anything on it. No new submissions came in, although I think we have till next week.
We have another, we have another week.
So, well, we're gonna deal with Strickland Lane. Um, so I forgot about that. But I would be happy to do it that night or wait for the next meeting. Whatever you'd like.
I think doing it that, I think doing it that night of the next meeting would be good because this is, when is this going into effect?
So, yeah, so the, this is kind of a strange situation with this bill. So this bill takes effect ninety days after the governor signed it. But, um, it needs to go to rulemaking um, because the Department of Economic and Community Development, who's the overseeing agency at the state level, is going to need to make some rules regarding grant opportunities that are gonna come within that bill. Um, and then the law says that municipalities have until July one of twenty-three to put it into effect. Which means everybody's gonna be scrambling this fall and winter to get drafts of any ordinance amendments available so that it can go to town meeting next spring.
A quick, just a quick question on that particular item. I know that they say you can have multiple ADUs.
Yes.
But to the, I'm, I'm probably mistaken, but I thought that the ADUs had to be attached.
No. So when it comes to just ADUs, um, the law says, um, you shall, you shall allow ADUs. You can have, um, I wanna say two ADUs. I gotta go back and look at the law. One does have to be either inside the home or attached to the principal structure. And then you can have a separate standalone ADU on the parcel as well.
Okay. How does that affect our ordinance when we already say you can have a standalone as long as you're sharing the septic and water?
I'd need to look a little closer. I haven't done that level of assessment, but my gut tells me that we can't, we, we, we shouldn't allow just standalones. Um, because I believe the way the law is written, you need to have one either in the home or attached to the home. Then you get the standalone. Um, I'd need to assess that.
We've already got some standalones.
Right. And they're gonna be grandfathered, non-conforming.
And, and that's, that's my, 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 one of the questions I would have. It's like, you know, if we have to, if we have to change the ordinance so that we have to put one attached to the house, well, we wouldn't actually have to change the ordinance. The state law did that for us.
Pretty much, um, this community, from everything that I have looked at, kind of middle level look, um, not a high level, but a middle level. Uh, there may not be much that needs to be changed in this community. Um, there are a couple of things because there's three aspects of this law. One aspect is that if someone wants to do a, an affordable housing apartment complex or development, they're calling it, affordable housing development. And they can meet some performance standards like proving that they're going to have certain number of those units be affordable for the life thirty years. Pretty much like a rent restriction situation. Um, they get two and a half times the density of whatever zone they're locating.
And they, and it, does it matter if they, if the soil is, will handle the septic system?
The septic system certainly has to stand on its own as a performance code, yes. But, um, if they can find a way to make that work, they go two and a half times the density.
Okay.
There's, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Alright, the second aspect of this law um, is that if you have a vacant lot in a zone that allows residential development, you basically can have two duplexes on the same parcel.
There's a reason the parcel was vacant.
And then the third aspect is wherever residential uses are allowed in the zoning ordinance, you can do the ADUs, um, the attached, detached.
And that, that would lead me to my, to, to, to question because we allow residential units as an ancillary use to the business. Are you saying that we would have to allow ADUs?
No, um, because, because the way the law is written, it doesn't say, it, it only says that they have to be allowed where residential uses are allowed. Does not tie it to businesses.
Okay.
So you can keep that if you want, just the way it is.
Okay, question for you. Who decides what affordable housing is dollars and cents wise?
Yep, there is a, within the law, it talks about how you determine that. And it's based on, um, the Affordable Housing Index, which is established by main state housing on a yearly basis and on a municipal level that indicates that if you live in this community, that the median household income is X. And therefore you can spend, if you're purchasing a home, you can spend thirty percent of your income on, on a purchase of a unit. And if you're renting, I believe it's eighty percent of your income.
Okay, well, one question is, since we have this great crisis going on of heating and everything else, who can afford almost anything?
That unfortunately is not taken into consideration.
Yeah, I know, I know. Okay.
This is all doing good.
Well, I, you know, maybe we should have a workshop on that.
Sure.
Yep. And in, instead of taking up time at a regular meeting, just have a workshop on that because it sounded, just, just from the little bit that you've given us, there's, there's gonna be a lot of stuff that we're gonna have to deal with.
Yeah.
And, and I think if we, if we do a workshop, we can hear about it and then we can just map out what we need to change in the ordinance and just start working on it without taking up a meeting. Is there anything else that you have?
No, sir.
I have one thing. I talked with the town manager about getting us put on the, the agenda with the Board of Selectmen for next week. And he has done so. We have since received information that indicates that unless we're willing to go to court, that law's gonna stand. And I don't know how the rest of you feel, but I'm not willing to spend my time and effort and money to go to court, um, over, over the whole issue. So I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna show up at the meeting this. I'm gonna notify the town manager, but it makes no, it makes no sense to go and fight for something that.
We're gonna lose anyway.
Not only are we gonna lose, we, it would be, it could be painful.
No, actually, Marty, we're not necessarily gonna lose. It's just that I spoke to the Assistant Attorney General and Rich and I got quite a bit of information from the legislature of their, the law library and uh, from MMA. The, the problem is, nobody wants to interpret the laws that they've written. And so the only way to get it, something interpreted, is to have it adjudicated in the court. Um, one thing that the Assistant AG made very clear is that the laws of the state of Maine supersede town laws and town charters when they conflict with the laws of the state of Maine. That's one thing. The question is, does the new law, L D seventeen seventy-two supersede the selectmen's ability to make a decision about whether or not we meet remotely? And I agree with Rich that I'm not willing to put my money where my mouth is in terms of fighting this and the selectmen. Although I am gonna ask you, Lee J, if you could, um, ask the selectmen to provide me with the opinion letter that the town attorney wrote based on the new law, L D seventeen seventy-two, which they say grant them the ability to make the decision whether or not we get to meet remotely.
I thought it was a charter, but granted.
No, they, they're, they're saying the charter, but the attorney general was saying that state law trumps the charter.
That's right. So I wanna know what Leia's opinion is. If she, uh, she obviously wrote an opinion about L D thirty-two, which the selectmen paid for. Now I wanna know whether or not she wrote an opinion letter about L D seventeen seventy-two, which revises the first uh, or law and gives more discretion. Um, the question is, it doesn't really say who it gives discretion to and who gets to decide what an emergency is. So both of those things remain vague. So I'd like to know what Leia thinks and what her opinion letter has to say about it.
I will pass that on and ask for that information.
Okeydoke.
So at any rate, if you guys wanna show up on Monday night and have a discussion with the selectmen, feel free to do so. I shall not be there. At, at, at some point, you just run the flag up and go, yeah, okay. I'm.
Hey, the only other option is, is you run for an open seat when the select seat opens. That's it. Then you can make the decision.
Yeah, or. It, it, you know, I'm a, I'm a big fan of, of fighting the system, but it's, at some time, even, even though the system might be wrong, you have to give up.
Right.
You just can't. You know.
Yeah, I, I.
I got scars on my head from banging my head against a wall.
I'm not willing to go for it, guys.
Yeah.
It's not good for the town.
I'm just curious, Lee J.
What other towns are actually still doing Zoom meetings like the planning board or anything else? Did you get any of those information back or is everybody just kinda keeping it quiet and not saying anything?
No, um, um, I'm trying to think. Um, Agunkwit, um, has, I, I'm thinking first of boards that I work with. Agunkwit has gone to back to in-person, although they do provide Zoom for the public to participate. But the board is in-house. Waterboro, um, is fully in-house. Um, North Berwick, I believe, because I'm not directly working with them, are still, um, they're in-house. Um, I don't know what South Berwick is doing. I have another staff person that works on them.
But mostly, everybody's doing it in-person, I mean.
I was at Buxton the other night in person.
Yeah, yeah.
You might not know that.
Yeah. Okay, that's, I just wanted to mention that to you guys so that you, you'll know I won't be there.
So you let them know that, that we're dropped and that?
I'm, yeah, I, I sent Keith, uh, a note letting him know that I was going to, to let the planning board know that it, you know, we're, this is a losing battle for us.
You know, since we're gonna be here, we want Zoom to work. Uh, is it Keith that's in charge of I T here or? It's, we gotta.
Yeah.
Figure out a way to, you know.
It's, it, it's supposed to be a simple, a simple matter. I mean, we've got the directions. Everything is attached the way it's supposed to be and it's not working.
Yeah, but we had the same problem last time.
And well, it, you know.
With, with, what are you hearing out of one?
Yeah, the sound wasn't working.
Zoom.
Hard to hear Zoom.
Zoom is working.
I know, Zoom is working.
The camera's not, yeah.
Camera's not.
I couldn't see anybody.
Well.
Yeah.
We can see you.
It's, it's not, well, you and I are the only two that are on Zoom and it's not, it doesn't even show. Well, I'm on there with Keith, but it doesn't lift up.
Yeah, we should have some speaker over here someplace.
There's, there's gotta be, the TVs have speakers. We need to figure out how we can turn the volume up on.
Yeah.
A, a TV this size better have a speaker.
And I could barely hear the people from Vinegar Hill. It was very garbled.
Yeah, we could.
He wasn't speaking into the mic.
He's, he's very soft voiced.
At any rate, somebody make a motion.
Someone.
Second.
Move the zone.
Rich?
The meeting is adjourned.
Bye, everybody.